All right, it's 6:00 PM. We are going to call to order to the 261st session of the 10th Council, November 9th, 2021. 6:00 PM, meeting location, City Council Chambers on Woodward. Invitation by Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come together one more time in this building, Lord Jesus. We are so thankful to be able to be together and to be with the citizens so that we can hear whatever it is that they need us to hear our due. We thank you for this day, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call.
Carter?
Present.
Miller?
Present.
Hidala?
Here.
Shramsky? Taylor Burks?
Present.
Waterman?
Here.
Williams?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a call.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Can we have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Shramsky?
So moved for personal reasons.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported, any City Council discussion? CNN roll call?
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
All right, any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, if I might?
Yes.
I would ask why we're dealing with number three, because nobody should be in the Pyrex Center anyway. I would ask that, I don't know if the cable subcommittee met, but I would ask that maybe four, five, six be removed unless the subcommittee has some suggestions as it relates to that, move that until the new administration and council comes in and let them deal with it. I would also ask that 10, 11, 12, and 13 be put up front so we can vote on those at the beginning of the meeting, sir.
Okay. The only thing that I have with that particular thing is the cable, I guess, is already a moot point. I think we need to vote on it because they did renovations and things to the building already without any council approval. So I don't know how you retroactively approve anything. So I think it needs to be voted on for the record.
As I say, we vote on it, we didn't authorize them to do it, so we just voted, which is a total disrespect, just go ahead and vote on it, vote no, because no one authorized them to do this. As for number three, Mr. President, we need to leave it on for the reason of why are those kids over to the Pyrex Center when we specifically took the money out of the budget? Why are they there? Who are, where's the money coming from, the reason she got them there? And who has the insurance on them? Those are very important questions that we need to ask the administration. I want, I want to know that myself.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Hold on one second, I just wanted to also bring up item number 14, which probably if we're moving stuff to the new administration, it should be moved. And then I have an add-on. So.
Okay, so you guys are stating that you want to hear. I really don't care, but. No, I don't want to hear. I, I just think we need to discuss, I don't want to hear none of it, because it's inexcusable. I know, and it shouldn't be, but I understand exactly what you're saying. Okay, I'm good. That's the norm of the administration.
Okay, your action.
Okay, Mr. President, I did have a comment about number three that you, I was trying to make before you interrupted. I believe we all got an email from Mr. Burks saying that he was retiring because they were going back to Pyrex, and he didn't want to be a part of it. He wasn't going to be involved in the politics.
Right.
So, but they have his name on this agenda.
Which is a good question. I looked at that as well.
So, so to go back to it. What are we doing with item number three?
It's muted.
First of all, it's a special presentation.
Right, but if Mr. Burks is not here?
He's not here, so it's, we, actually, I think that's maybe just stricken, and then we need the discussion as a body, what are we going to do with them over to a Pyrex Center? It wasn't authorized, the mayor need to answer us, Mr. President, how she got those kids over there? Who's paying for the insurance? One of those kids get hurt over there, we are liable for it.
Okay.
Who's paying for the building, period?
That's what I'm saying, we don't know anything.
I, I get all of that, so you got, next week is the study session, do you want to add?
We'll add that on, but take that off.
Next week?
Okay.
And take off item number three. And then the issues, because Councilwoman Waterman is the one who made these recommendations to start, so.
I'm fine.
Okay, four, five, and six, are we dealing with those today?
That's my subcommittee, and I haven't dealt with any of that, so you can, she's our, 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 our.
I'm just talking about leaving it on the agenda.
No, take them off.
Council President, those issues are moved.
Okay, so, so just, I'm just making sure the clerk has the right thing. So we're taking off item number three, four, five, and six, right?
Yeah.
We're moving items number 10, 11, and was it, was it 13? Or 12 and 13?
12 and 13.
Yep, 12 and 13, right after, right after item number two. And then I, I would ask that we table item number 14 until the new administration comes in.
I, I support that.
And, and, oh, you said what?
15 and 16, too.
To do what?
There was no meeting.
Oh, there was no meeting? Okay, so, and remove items number 15 and 16.
Remove those two.
And then I have an add-on in regards to the retirees that's in front of everybody.
Question, Mr. President, still have one from last week. To move back into council chambers, the question wasn't asked, that asked last week. Since we going into new equipment and new everything else, the public had to have all the data from, from last year before we left. So all the City Council meetings need to be available on the city website for the public.
Okay, and, and we can't order administration to do that, but we need to have a resolution.
Have a resolution to let the people know that since last year.
We got a whole year missing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make it into a resolution later.
Okay.
So what does all of this mean? And then you say you add on. So let me repeat on it.
Yep, the clerk's going to repeat it, so for clarity.
So we're removing three, four, five, and six. You're moving 10, 11, 12, 13 after two. And you're removing 14, 15, and 16, and then you're adding on.
The resolution?
The resolution in regards to the gurs.
Yes, so it needs to be a second for that.
Okay, I'm sorry, what did you say, Mr. President?
If you can repeat it one more time, Mr. Clerk, for clarity.
Removing three, four, five, and six. Move 10, 11, 12, and 13 after two. Remove 14, 15, and 16, and then add on the resolution on gurs. Moved by Waterman, and then you need a support.
The add-on can go right after items number 10, 11, 12, and 13.
No, you remove that, so be after nine.
No, 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 we need to deal with it before we go to disaster plan, so let's move it after 13.
13's not on here.
You remove 13.
Oh, well, after 12, then, whatever.
No, you were, you were moving 10, 11, 12, and 13, so they're gone.
No, it is not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
That is moved after item two.
So after item number 13.
Will be the add-on.
Yes, will be the add-on, and then we can go back to the other stuff.
Okay. All right, so you need a second.
I need a second.
So.
Go lower.
Okay, so the second is by Hidala, any City Council discussion? CNN roll call?
Hidala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, thank you, agenda is approved. No, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved to approve the agenda as amended. Amendments.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, agenda is approved, which brings us to item number one, approval of minutes for November 4th, 2021.
Move.
Support.
Any discussion? CNN roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, which brings us to?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, from, from the minutes, were we able to notify the people that were at the library that it wasn't broadcast live?
Oh, please.
This should be in the minutes?
What's that?
We met at the library, and the meeting was not broadcast live.
It wasn't?
No, no.
It was on the webpage, and people saw it.
I understand.
It was on cable.
Right.
All right, just wanted to make sure that's included in the minute, I'm sorry, I forgot about it. So you already approved the minutes?
We did.
As is.
Okay, no problem, I just, then I just mentioned it publicly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, which brings us to item number two, public safety.
I'm going to ask that they be approved, they are in the minutes, and because we have this issue with fire and police, I did add all of the minutes for STAR EMS from 2016, so you can understand how many calls STAR takes that our fire department does not take.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, now we're at item number 10, I believe.
Yes, Mr. President, this was a matter that came before the finance subcommittee, and we all agreed that this should be moved forward. I guess after we agreed to have this moved forward, it had to be a budget amendment, so that's why it's now back on our agenda to be able to vote for.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move.
Support.
Has been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN roll call?
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, that brings us to item number 11, resolution to approve the budget amendment for fiscal year 2021, 2022, to increase account 101447806000, engineering services in an amount of $190,000 and zero cents.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN roll call?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, brings us to item number 12, resolution to approve the city treasurer to spread $25,569.17 of property assessment on the 2020-21 winter tax rolls as requested by the water resource commissioner.
So moved.
Support.
Has been moved and supported, any discussion?
No.
Okay, CNN roll call?
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, which brings us to item number 13, is a resolution to approve the clerk to publish notice of proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021, 2022, to allocate a total of $81,213 to the general fund account 101266959.003, settlement payments.
Move.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion?
Question, Mr. Clerk, which paper will be published then? To the president in the Oakland press. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? CNN roll call?
Miller?
Yes.
Hidala?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, which brings us to the add-on item, Mr. Clerk, if you would read the resolution?
Whereas pursuant to provision 13, transition period of the settlement agreement, the current stipend payment being paid to retirees under GURS plan will continue, continue until, but not beyond such time as the U.S. Internal Revenue Service has approved the new plans. And whereas the retirees of the City of Pontiac General Employee Retirement System currently receive a $400 supplemental pension payment, and this payment is set to expire on December 31st, 2021, and whereas the City Council is continuing to support the retirees and in facilitating being in compliance with the terms of the settlement agreement, seek to determine the cost to continue the $400 supplemental pension payments for one year. And whereas it has been expressed that the benefits from the new VIBA will commence in February of 2022, however, if for some reason the benefits do not begin in February 2022, the requested actuarial study will cover a term of one year. And whereas MCL 38114B subsection 5 requires that the retirement system actuary performs a supplemental actuarial analysis to determine the cost of any increase in pension benefit prior to adopting and implementing additional benefits. And whereas MCL 381140H subsection 5 provides the retirement system, assets may not be used for any actuarial expense related to the supplemental actuarial analysis provided for under MCL 381140H subsection 5, but instead requires that any supplemental actuarial analysis be paid for by the city. Now therefore be resolved that the Pontiac City Council desires for the city to have a supplemental actuarial analysis performed, and be further resolved, the General Employees' Retirement System Board of Trustees is hereby directed to request the system's actuary perform a supplemental actuarial analysis to determine the cost of continuing the $400 supplemental pension payment for one year along with a copy of this resolution, and the city shall pay the cost to perform the supplemental actuarial analysis.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we make a motion, I would like to see the clerk correct paragraph number five where he read 381140B subsection 5 to 381140H subsection 5. Because that first one, he made a mistake, and he said B.
Whereas MCL 381140H subsection 5 requires that the retirement system actuary perform a supplemental actuarial analysis to determine the cost of an increase in pension benefit prior to adopting and implementing additional benefits. Anne?
Thank you very much, so moved.
Support, but I would like to state as it relates to this, that the retirement board, we are now in the midst of having a supplemental actuarial report done, but I am very appreciative of this council understanding what it means to our retirees. So we're supposed to be having the report to us by the 15th, and so this council will know further about what monies will be transferred, and I will relate that more to you, but I have no problem with moving forward on this resolution as it stands right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waterman, and we look forward to hearing your report as our pension board person. Ms. Swazer came to the City Council last week and said that the retirees may have been in damage or in danger of not getting paid in January if we didn't take action, so just trying to make sure that they remain whole and don't miss any payments. So any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Any other City Council discussion? Okay, CNN roll call?
No recognition for the mayor?
Roll call.
Hidala?
Yes.
Shramsky?
Oops, sorry.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays.
Okay, all right, it brings us back to the top of the agenda, now we're at recognition of elected officials. Seeing no elected officials, I'm turning the agenda back over. Item number seven is a resolution to approve a contract between the city and International Construction to provide demolition services for CDBG clearance and demolition of batch 17 properties not to exceed $175,000.
So moved.
Is there a support?
Support.
All right, any discussion?
I guess I have one, Mr. President. I mean, out of all the documents, I mean, it's supposed to be a carbon copy, these are useless to read. I mean, whoever, by whatever means was, they're bad, and they're totally illegible in the source of writing. Lastly, I will let everyone know that I wouldn't vote on this anyway, because, just stating for the reason, because of all the, the bad documentation that's un-inlegible, I have no idea how old these properties are, these properties belong to the county. Thank you, Mr. President.
These are city properties, and, Mr. President, excuse me, but we have never had a problem with international. I know one of our residents have had a problem, but that was a personal issue, that's not a business issue. They have always cleaned up after themselves and taken very good care of the properties for which they have demolished houses on.
Sorry, can you read the signatures?
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Hidala.
Thank you.
Can we read the signature?
No.
We voted on this item before it failed.
We voted, we voted on the asbestos. We have never voted on this, we have always passed this by, but we did vote to approve the asbestos for these houses on batch 17.
Okay.
We've never voted on this, we, we've all listened to what Chuck Johnson has said, and because the resident has said something negative, we've always passed by it.
Okay, roll call? Roll call, roll, roll, roll call?
Taylor Burks?
You're already speaking.
Item number seven?
Oh, no.
No. Okay. Waterman?
No.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Hidala?
I was going to say yes. Obviously, I made a move, so I guess I'm saying yes, right? But if it says no, they can bring it back at another time.
One yay, five nays.
Okay, motion fails, which brings us to item number eight, resolution to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation, a tunnel inspection agreement for the Phoenix Center Tunnel on Orchard Lake Road.
Move.
Support.
Has been moved and supported, any discussion? CNN roll call?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Uh, no.
Miller?
No.
Hidala?
Yes.
Four yays, two nays.
Okay, motion passes, which brings us to item number nine, resolution to approve the City of Pontiac Disaster Emergency Plan. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I have a question. I, I know you, I think before you had some concerns about this, have those concerns been, been addressed?
So, no, they have not. One of the things that was problematic is there was never a question to pro temp Carter's question, what happens if people don't answer the phones? And it all gets triaged back to whatever it is.
We asked for some information, if I remember correctly, Mr. President, and we never received any, at least I haven't.
May I give you that information as I speak?
Go ahead, ma'am, ma'am. Yeah, go ahead, ma'am, ma'am.
Too late, if we don't have any writing.
The emergency plan for the city is required to have by the county, and we do not have one in place if there's a disaster, an emergency at some place, because ours is expired. This was presented to council previously on several different agendas, and at the first time, council president said he would address, send us some questions that he wanted to be answered. We never received those questions, although we waited for three. Now this agenda item means the city is standing out of compliance, and right now has no accurate emergency plan. Should that be full, the city does entirely unprepared, and a seralition duty of city government provide for emergency services.
He wanted to talk about that.
We do ask the DPW to do this, with all the people that need to sign it, to take care in case there is something, or something that happens. We do calmly ask what this council have to submit, to prepare this plan at this time. Thank you.
Okay, roll call?
I don't think you had a move.
We have a move, is there a move? Okay, is there a move? All right, no move, so we will go on to the next agenda item, which is, if I'm reading this correctly, public comment. And so we need the microphone from, somebody from the administration to move the microphone to the podium?
Okay.
There's no public microphone?
Come on. Where's Ken, you both here?
Patrice, can we borrow your microphone?
Well, of course.
So the public hearing's been delayed, there's no microphone for the public to speak?
Public comment.
No.
Sorry.
She's taking hers down there.
We've got one up there.
Thank you. All right. First person would be Lloyd Gary, and then Renee Beckley on deck.
Is the clock set up there, just what they're talking about, the clock? I don't think it works. It's not working.
Clearly, clearly, the clock up here says three minutes, we also set a timer for three minutes, but you won't be able to watch it on that clock. And so, like I said, we moved back into council chambers without any council approval, so it kind of is what it is at this point, but if you want to go ahead and speak?
All right, Gary Lloyd, I have, I have a few questions that need addressing. You and your own self just said a minute ago, you're at the Athletic Club, or whatever it is, you're held liable. So why ain't there a manhole down at the lake, by, by Osmond Lake yet? There's still no barriers, still no nothing. The end of it, I give you pictures, I give you all your paperwork, I give you everything you need, but the Marriott thing passed so fast you couldn't breathe, I don't still know what that is. What'd you do with the money? How many people did you pass for the marijuana law? And that's a $5,000 non-refundable deal. Where'd the money go for that? I don't know, I don't care about that, I don't smoke weed. They asked me that, somebody asked me that a while back, and I go, I don't know. But anyhow, I'm just, I know, I'm not the sharpest pencil in the box, but when somebody gets hurt and takes a lot of money from the city, or whatever, I can't say I didn't try to help. So, I do the best I can. I understand what I can, but I'm still gonna push this issue about the trees missing because there was no, there was no permits pulled, there's people pushing down trees, pushing debris in other people's property, a lot of things are just going on. I gave you pictures, I gave you letters, I've done about everything I can do. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go to the twelve-hundred building and start pushing the issue. Somewhere along the line, there's a crumb. I'm gonna get the crumb eventually and find out where the trees went, who plowed down all the field. The individual owns, says he owns all this property over by Osmond Lake. I'm gonna find out what's going on. I got all the paperwork for everybody's property rights, I got every, all, the guy owns the middle of the lake, on the bottom of the lake, and I like, I didn't know that. So, you know, I'm just gonna keep moseying along and pushing along because I'm long-lasting and I'll be here and I'll be here and I'll be here, and then y'all, y'all are leaving, so you really don't care, sit back in your little cozy chair, wait for somebody to get hurt, and then they'll push the pencil on you or do an audit or something. There's gonna, something gonna go down, because when I talked to the lady at the forestry service, she disappeared. A month later or so, the building disappeared. I can't find the lady, but that's all right. I got paperwork, I just need to go find it. I was passed, the hundred thousand dollars was passed for the part, turn around, it was discontinued on account of conflict or where it went, I don't know. But I just, I keep pushing along and y'all just go about your thing, do whatever, but when something happens, I'm gonna be right there in the middle of it.
Time. Thank you, sir. Yeah, I'm gonna address that at the end. Ms. Renee Beckley and then Chuck Johnson on deck.
I come to this microphone, like to pull this down because COVID's in the air, but I'm halfway pulling it down, to do some awareness of this election. I never seen one like it. It's, the three of the races are very suspect to me and some of the rest of them were, you know, expected, but the three of them, especially the Perry Earl, Mike McGinnis, and Brother L race, I don't see how a candidate that's been campaigning all year, January, can be beat by somebody that came in September. And this, that's the timeframe and the elections in November. And really, the, the second candidate didn't really do any campaigning, didn't put in the signs what he was running for. Also, I gotta point out, because I don't think District Seven's aware of this, there's a two thousand eleven incident involving this candidate, and I believe this guy was one of his campaign workers or manager, former Oakland County Democrat Party officials charged with Tea Party forgery scheme. So, this is Mike McGinnis, one, this is from MLI, Detroit News and Free Press, and Jason Bauer, they're here tonight. And they, uh, did some forgery with third-party candidate, uh, well, Mike used to be the former chairman of the Oakland County Democratic Party and Jason was the former operations director.
Address, address your comments to the acting body.
Okay, right, I'm, I'm to the audience. I read a news article, why are you censoring us what we can say? This, we have a First Amendment right. These candidates are free game. Once they bow for, running for election, they're free game. If they're free game in the press and we read the press, they should be free game and I should be able to say what I want to. I have my right opinion. I live in Pontiac. I campaigned for this man, even though I couldn't walk for him because of my feet situation. So, I just saying that, uh, why, Mike continues to involve him and Jason in our politics and can they come to go to Auburn Hills and do that? They won't be able to, be allowed to do it. I don't know why you have to cover up and stuff. We could say what we want to. Y'all, y'all, I'm just saying, this is America, First Amendment right. Do I have to sue for my First Amendment right like Quincy and Kennedy did? Really, I honestly, you can't tell her, everybody that comes up here and curtail what they have to say. This is news article. This is already printed. This been out, this happened in two thousand eleven. I saw you and you on television standing in front of a judge. I don't know how you got out of it, but you kinda got the slap on the wrist. But why you come to Pontiac and you can't run anywhere else? I'm not the same bit of grace, it's just questioning, this is who you got.
That's your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on.
And so, we're not going to have this, the council rules is this is a public building, you can't talk about elections. I asked you to speak to the current body that's sitting here. No, no, hold on, Renee. Your, your time, your time, your time is up today. What I'm, what I'm saying to you is, this is a public building that can't be used for electioneering or whatever. Half of these elections are being challenged and other things are happening. You can't be speaking on things in a city building that's there. And so, I will defer to the city attorney for clarity on that, but we're not going to have this for the next eight weeks, just going back and forth debating whatever the election results are. If you have a city issue, as a city person, you can talk about those issues. But we're, this is not the form for that. This is a public building that's paid for with taxpayer dollars. So, I'll defer to the city attorney before we go forward.
All right, Mr. Council President, you want an opinion on speaking on local items during the council meetings?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'll be able to furnish that for you the next meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, who's next?
Mr. Chuck Johnson and then Mr. Kevin Stewart on deck.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience and those of you at home watching by television. Item number seven on your agenda was an, was an item that I was going to speak on before it even got, the council even talked on it. I think this, I think the citizens should realize that the reason why I'm adamant about these properties not getting tore down is because I went back and I had a look at these properties and that out of the seventeen, there's at least ten of these properties that are rehabble and shouldn't be tore down. I don't know if anybody's noticed that in recent months, our Hispanic population has grown quite a bit. And if you've noticed, like I have, a lot of the dormant properties that has been sitting dormant, uh, they have acquired them in some fashion, either from the county or from private ownership, and they're now rehabbing those properties. And I'm glad to see that happen. And I think number seven, as a relation to that demolition, if you got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to spend on a guy who's gonna take it back to his hometown, why don't you spend that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars right here in the city, in this room, for an example? Or take some of that money and spend it on individuals who would love to own one of these seventeen properties that's gonna go back and rehab them, take ten thousand of this dollars and add it to whatever they're gonna spend to rehab them and get these houses back on the tax roll. No thanks to Mary Pedala, I know what her motivation is, but I'm gonna say this, help the citizens of the city. Don't let these properties get demolished for no good reason. Thank you. A bad reason.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Kevin Stewart? Okay. Pastor Jose?
He's a pastor?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to each and every one of you, Mayor Waterman, Councilmen, Councilwomen, each and every, thank you so much for your service. I know in this time of elections, there's, there's going to be change, but I want to thank you for your efforts. I pray that you leave the city in better condition than what you found it. But I, I want, want to say to you that your accountability did not end at the polls. You now have a responsibility to transfer your seat in a manner that is both dignified and righteous, as well as with the forethought to the citizens of this great city. And again, thank you so much. I know you've done many things and I know you've butted heads many times, but slow is the wheel. Slow is the wheel. And I want to again say thank you, and I want to leave you with this, there's a song called "The Blessing," and I want to say that to you today, that the Lord bless you and keep you, make His face shine upon you, and the Lord be gracious to you, and give you peace, and may He turn His face towards you, and may His favor be upon you up to a thousand generations. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Melissa, is it speeding? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Musa Siring. I am the manager of Oak Hill and Ottawa Park Cemetery in Pontiac and in Clarkston. So, I have brought myself out to a couple of these meetings. Unfortunately, last week, I didn't realize I had to sign up to speak, but I've brought myself out here to introduce myself to you, the general public, along with the council. So, my team and I are working very hard around the clock in hopes of trying to reestablish some great relationships in the city of Pontiac down at Oak Hill. We've made great strides. That cemetery is almost eighty-nine percent full at this time. Also, at Ottawa Park in Clarkston, we've actually had a great increase of residents being laid to rest there from Pontiac, also from the Clarkston area, so much so that we've actually gone on to build a new mausoleum out there for everybody to have a final resting place if they prefer. So, honestly, I just came to introduce myself. If there's anything I can do for anybody in regards to a family or loved one out there, please don't hesitate to call me if you see me out in the public, because I'm local here. Don't hesitate to stop me. Like I said, my team and I were here to try to help repair some of the broken relationships from past management companies over there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, last speaker would be Mel.
Good evening. The fruits of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. If you love Pontiac, then you must love the people who we are elected to serve. If you want joy, then you must be speak joyful when talking about the citizens of Pontiac. If you desire peace, then you must be spread the peace within yourself and your actions and deeds. If you say that you have patience, then you must show patience with how we communicate with our community and with ourselves. If you want kindness, then you must show to be kind. If you want goodness, then your actions must display goodness. If you want to be faithful, then you must be faithful with the task that you have to do. You have to walk it, you have to talk it. If you want gentleness, then you must see the gentleness inside of us all. If you say that you have self-control, then you must control yourself. I say these fruits because sometimes we allow our emotions to lead us, and we need to be reminded that we must start to show the fruits of the Spirit, because their fruit that is not prune, that is not seasoned, that is not water, will wither and die. The city of Pontiac is the fruit, and we have to start to season it. We can't season it with hate. We can't season it with fear or fear-mugling. We can't season it because we don't feel comfortable with who has been chosen to lead. We must season it with compassion and self-control. And if I, a person who has sometimes struggled with self-control, can control myself and my emotions, then surely the city of Pontiac can, can control themselves and learn to lead with the fruits of the Spirit. It's called the fruit of the Spirit. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're in the public comments.
All right, that brings us to closing comments. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak, to address the audience. I would like to say that we have a lot of the newly-elected candidates here. I have reached out to most of you because I wanted to welcome you to city government, and I have talked to each of you about how we can have a smooth transition. That's what I'm here to do. As my role, I'm proud of what we have accomplished over the last eight years, but I want to make sure we pass the baton for the benefit of the citizens of Pontiac. So, I've already talked to a number of you and I will talk to the one who was just recently announced as well. One of the things, and I'm sorry you took off the special presentation about the youth rec activities in Pontiac, that's something very proud the citizens have accomplished to pass that youth rec millage. We are doing activities, and one of the things that went on recently was a jam session, and that was the first basketball, several basketball games that were played at the United Wholesale. Wonderful, a sports arena over there. So, our youth got a chance to participate in that, and that was a wonderful occasion. And that's how other millage dollars are being spent to provide youth our wholesome activities through those activities, that program. You're gonna get the brochures for the summer programs in the mail for all the activities that are going on for the youth in Pontiac. One of the things that is going on that I wanted to convene with the new candidates as well as our current council on was the fact that the American Rescue Plan dollars that we've had town halls for a number of time, I wanted every resident in Pontiac who had some input to be engaged in that conversation. We have had a number of those that are full to capacity. We will be bringing that information back to council, as well as I've invited all the newly-elected candidates to come and have that conversation. And we are gonna have a town hall, Frank, have you got it on? We are gonna have a virtual town hall tomorrow, that's by Zoom, that's on the website, and we're gonna talk about some of the ideas that have come out of these town hall meetings that we've had. The other thing I want to alert you to is that we have our DPW department, Dwayne Lyons, who is the interim director, who wants to get more people and local contractors involved in snow plowing for the city of Pontiac. This is something that we've tried to do for a number of time, and he's put together, I think, an opportunity to do that, and we have people who can support local snowplow operators who can't afford the licensing and the bonding that goes into that, need help. So, he's having a meeting tomorrow, November tenth, right here at City Hall at six P.M. So, if you know any local contractors who would like to be part of this program, would like to know how to join it, we want to make sure that we support our businesses, support and hire our own when we have an opportunity, and this meeting will show them how that can be done. Thank you. It's been great to see here, everybody here tonight in our, back in City Hall again, eighteen months ago, when we had a city state of emergency, who knew it would take us this long to get back into our own headquarters? Good evening.
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, but I did want to publicly thank a few people as relates to the election on November second, in particular, the ASI paving, although the lot is not completed. Dan Israel, who is the manager, and I believe his boss is Tim Boucher, that they were able to get the lot at least in shape where we did not have to move the Boeing Center as a polling location. And I also want to publicly thank Pastor Tobert and Deacon Roy Eaton of Trinity Baptist Church, because I had worked with them and they were on standby, so if the lot would have not been finished, then we would have been able to move the polling location to Trinity. So, I definitely want to thank those four individuals that helped us to have a smooth election. Thank you, Mr. President.
Attorney Sharp?
Say that I, I really do have some serious concerns about PyREC, and I'm glad that that's gonna be an agenda item next week for council to discuss, because I really am not sure how we're operating PyREC without the authorization of council.
We're going to jail.
All right. Councilwoman Waterman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, and I guess I'll be looking forward to that presentation too. I have some hard questions that need to be addressed, and the people who are allowing this, I think some legal legalities need to be taken as it relates to that. But I'm gonna say good evening, and I'm gonna say many thanks to my colleagues for your years of service and helping to do the right thing to continuously move this city forward. And I'm also going to congratulate the newly-elected council members and mayor-elect. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say the same thing. Thank you for everyone that ran and those that won. You will find out that it's not as easy as it looks. And, and so, but I have enjoyed my stay here, and I hope that I have satisfied my constituents. I know one that's here, I never could, you know, satisfy her, but there are other people that live in my district that has said that I was doing a good job. So, thank you very much, and I, I am having my last Christmas party for the children on the third of December at the library. It'll be from three to five. I have all their toys in my garage right now, and we always have a good time. So, if you, if you have any children or grandchildren or neighbor children, please let their parents know, we always have a good time. Thank you. I have enjoyed my seat up here with my boss. And God bless you.
Councilwoman Pedala?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say thank you to everybody. The twelve years that I've sat up here, I have truly enjoyed, but as my daughter says, I've had five grandchildren born while I was sitting here, so now I can spend time with my five grandchildren. It's time for family and it's time for friends. It's time to be myself. I don't have to be politically correct anymore. I don't have to be politically correct anymore. And Mr. Lloyd, I want to share with you, Mr. Gary, I have this printed for you. Two weeks, three weeks ago, I had the DPW director send it to me. It shows that all of the property, with the exception of a ring around Osmond Lake, is privately owned. The ring around Osmond Lake is in red and I'm gonna bring this down to you as soon as I'm done speaking, so you can see this. I tried explaining this to you the last term, if you remember, but you were not so receptive. Hopefully you will see that. This is coming out of the DPW director's file and he has it for you. So thank you for that. Again, thank you, everybody. I have three friends sitting in this audience, Mike, Brett and Melanie was here. Good luck, you guys, you're gonna enjoy it. Thank you, there she is. Thank you very much. Oh, and I think I seen Carrington in here earlier. Carrington, are you here? There you go. You'll have, I didn't see your hand come up, I was looking at Brett. So good luck to you as well, sir. Have a good time, guys. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
I don't know which mic to use. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm sorry to break the monotony, it's not gonna be all that great with me, I'm just being Gloria. I'm leaving the way I came. Outspoken, telling the truth to power, and that's what I'm gonna do tonight. First, I want to say thank you to all my four hundred and ninety supporters and more because I've been here all my life. I used to own a beauty shop, many of you, I did your hair, I've been knowing you for years. So I want to say thank you again for supporting me. But I want to say something, you know, I know it's kumbaya moment, but that's not me, because Pontiac is small and like I said, I've been here all my life. It was some dirty races. This was about far the dirtiest campaigns I ever seen in my life and I've been here twenty-some years standing behind that podium. So it's not gonna be, you know, healing right away because it was some dirty stuff done. And I got a passage, you know, it just popped on my phone, it's funny, it says, "You would never understand the damage you did to someone until the same thing is done to you." So what you did to someone, what you did to me, it's gonna come right back at you. And so many people wanted me out of this seat. I ain't bragging, but I know my district, I'm gonna always know my district. I know the people in it. I know where the Nixon cranes, I know everything about it because I was there every day. But I want to say one thing, I've been, I attended Welcome for forty-four years, I quit because my pastor's too much in politics, Pastor Jones. I'm out. He's too political. And you guys gonna learn a lot, when I get on the other side, the activist, that's how I got where I'm at, by being the activist, to tell you what's going on, my supporters out there. I'm gonna tell you who really runs this city and the dirt and the maneuvering that goes on is unacceptable. We never gonna grow in this city until we get, we got young people trying to run and you putting people in their way to block them so they can't win. I'm gonna call you out, every one of you. I know the president, I can't say names, you get lucky tonight, but I'm going to get your name out there. There's no one that walk in this city I'm afraid of because you ain't got nothing on me. Never did a backdoor deal, always stood up for my resident, but you want to get rid of me. My president of Harrison Hills, she want to get rid of me. Why? Ask yourself why? Because I walk only for the council, for District Five. They want to be removed because they want to do their agenda. And all I'm gonna say to you is, be careful what you ask for. Understand that some, everybody that comes to these seats ain't coming for the right reason, they got agenda. All I'm telling you to do is just watch and pray because I ain't going nowhere. I'm still, I know you got, I got granted too, but I'm still fired up, Mary, I'm gonna be writing that off. I'm being that artist for many years. Not every day, but I'll be here because somebody got a hold, these people are kind of, they've been in place too long and they gotta be called out and I'm bad enough to do it.
That's your time. That's your time. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Council, Pro Tem Carter.
Thank you very much and I appreciate it. Not gonna be, not gonna be so soft. I just want all, all the residents to know that last year was the first time we ever had all our streets cleaned because the city ordinance only says that your, your streets will be clean on your garbage day. So if it snows on Monday, you will wait till Friday to get out of, get out of your driveway. Actually, we hope we corrected that for last year. We would like to see the same thing because it's never been a time that local streets were ever decided by the city to be cleaned up. It's not in the ordinance, it was only major streets. So I expect the city to do, to do a better, better job this year. Also, the city of Pontiac is not a member of REACT. I'm a member of REACT for emergency, I'm ham operator, WATFI. I just want to let everybody know, the reason I had to deny this is that there's no contact here, not even for the, for, for our new director. The city of Pontiac does not even have a radio to contact all the other cities, especially what's called Open Sky and Oakway. Just want to let you know, the city of Pontiac is not in loop. Everybody else wants to be taking care of us. As far as the, the election, I'm not gonna speak on it, but there are a lot of documents, there are a lot of testimony, there, there will be some investigations on voter files. Things that happen on voter files are also, should be involved, ready in national security because there's a security briefs that happen within certain voter files. There were things that were disrupted. And for the last thing, I'd like to thank my, my five hundred fabs that I deal with every day and post my fourteen neighborhood watches and for everyone, each council member does have eight thousand seven hundred residents to deal with and I do have six thousand six hundred voters. With that, I want to say thank, thank you and my number's available and everybody can still contact me for any paperman documents. Thank you, sir, ma'am and city.
Thank you, Pro Tem Carter. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. It feels good to look at all of the faces here in the city of Pontiac this evening, to see you guys back in the city council chambers. This is not the headquarters of the city or other things, this is the council chambers. And the one thing that I'm looking forward to in January and the coming months is to have the three branches of government actually being the three branches of government. And so, and the reason I say that is because a lot of what we had to clean up as a council was because the council wasn't respected. The council wasn't looked at and the council wasn't put in place. So one of the things that I'm hopeful for is that as the city moves forward and we do have a charter revision that is coming up, that people will be involved in making sure that that is happening. The thirty-two page document is four months older than I am. And so it needs to be changed, it needs to be revised and it needs to be lifted up. But bigger than this election, we have a city of people that are hurting right now. We've got homicides in our city, we've got shootings on almost every corner in my district and other places and it's gonna take the city coming together, more so than what happens just in this building. And so my hope is that the energy that was put into putting out signs and other things and mailers and all of that stuff will go into things like mentorship and other things to move the city forward for the next generation. I got to sit up here for almost twelve years and I gave my hair to the city, which was good. But I not only enjoyed it, but I'm not going anywhere and I'm looking forward to the next chapter and the next phase for our city. But I'm also realistic about what the focal point needs to be. We have people who are wealth of information in the city that need to be tapped into and everybody has a part to play. And the last thing I'll say with the thirty seconds I got left is, we have tons of people who no longer reside in the city walls, but were born and raised and gave to Pontiac over the years. And what I would love to see is a Pontiac homecoming where everybody who had a piece of Pontiac can come back home and contribute, even if they don't live here any longer. And so I think with that mindset and that method,